Let's jump down to the appointment of South Africa County Election Board Secretary.
I haven't really wrote up because we don't have the right to, we just need to announce it.
You what now?
We just need an announcement.
Well, I guess we'll just announce it then. We're gonna appoint Stephanie Dance as sec- as Secretary Election Board.
I'm with you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Should we applaud?
Yay! Or can no one just want to get on? Judge did say he would swear you in if you wanted him to, but he said he's never done that before, but he will do whatever you want him to do.
We don't need to go up there and do that. We can just do whatever we need to do.
We'll rat naked.
That's right.
There you go.
Works for me. As little attention on me as possible.
So I can't take a picture of you through the paper?
I suppose.
Will you? I feel okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you, I guess, we can do that. Or you wanna leave right away probably. It's whatever. I don't know. If you just wanna, I'm sorry, is this okay?
Yeah, it's fine.
Do you wanna stand just against that solid background real quick? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Nope, that's fine. Everybody look away.
Okay. One, two, three. That's perfect.
Oh.
Okay.
Perfect.
I haven't ever heard that before.
Oh, you look good.
Thank you.
Did you bring your receipt?
I did. I don't have anything filled out on it because I didn't know what to be with it for sure. Here's what I have. I have two different.
Yep. They haven't changed the name or any of our election board secretary.
Sorry.
Make sure they haven't changed.
Sign like that.
I move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Month the officers report.
I have two. Have court clerks and their court clerks records and management. Sign there on that one. And I will send you copies as soon as I, I'll netherize them. I didn't bring my receipt. But I'll netherize them and send you a copy of them. Actually, I'll send you the original and we can keep the copy this way. We need the originals to go in.
Um, I don't, I don't know. They didn't say specifically, so.
Okay. I'll netherize and get them to you.
I'll make sure I finish.
Well, I mean, you are more than welcome to stay if you want to.
I've got some things I gotta do, so.
I will get those to you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too.
Hold your foot down out there.
I'm gonna try.
Good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Is Mike Cherokee.
Mike Cherokee Fire Department Nurse.
No, that's already on the side.
Oh.
No.
Like a law.
She saw mine too.
Well, I don't know that she's on yours though.
I'm getting a little pile up here in this second. So here's first one. All right, in a second.
There'll be like five or six there in around.
Let me shuffle the deck. Everyone's on three, four, two. Fireboard too.
Yep.
Just keep holding on.
They're trying to put them all together for you to see you don't have to hunt that way. Do you like Easter eggs? We can hide them.
I'm down here at the end. I'll plug everything in.
He was on a roll. Stacy, can you send that picture of Stephanie to me?
Sure.
Because we can change it on our Facebook.
Yeah.
Because she might not like me wanting to take it.
Oh, yeah, I can.
And it's not part of that. We'll change that next week on our Facebook page.
All right.
Not Facebook page, our website. Stacy, can you send that picture of Stephanie to me?
Sure.
Because we can change it on our Facebook.
Yeah.
Because she might not like me wanting to take it.
Oh, yeah, I can.
And it's not part of that. We'll change that next week on our Facebook page.
All right.
Not Facebook page, our website.
May I have y'all? Be careful there.
Is that twenty twenty or what? Mad Dog twenty twenty or?
Got to whip it through the base somehow, right?
Must be Australia. Pretty new. It ain't Mad Dog. It's pretty high. Mad Dog's team.
Well, he didn't say how much there was.
It's not Mad Dog and Prowl. That's a good combination.
You're all right ones.
Been a Mad Dog on Prowl before, haven't you?
I'm moving dead damn it on.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Like purchase orders?
Um, court clerk, I'm sorry, real one. EMS District One, District Four and nine one one. Sign that one. Jay needs to sign that top one. The little sign that one's under. Sorry, can't get the pile straight there.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Road crossing permits?
Nope.
ARP fines?
Um, I watched another webinar this week. Didn't have anything new. Betty Carroll did call and made sure that we have ran a resolution through on how we're going to spend that. Do you want me to put that on next week's agenda? So do you want me to just put minus the ten percent of the five hundred? So that's all we received and then we'll send another one through? Okay. I'll put that on there for next week then.
Now, request to move, remove Melissa and add Diane Williamson as receiving officer to the treasurer's office.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. This one here intrigues me a little bit. Request to remove Jay Hig as requisitioning officer for nine one one and add the board of chairman, or board of county commissioners chairman.
It's just easier for us to remember when you guys ask them or going through the meeting if we shift all that with the.
It don't make any difference.
It don't make any difference to me.
Makes it easier. We had changed all those other ones. And that one we hadn't changed.
I knew we'd moved everything around beginning of year and she texted me on Monday and I thought about it a little bit. And I was like, I don't see no benefit in it, so.
Benefit's us. It helps us when you guys go, who's supposed to be signing this? Thank you, Stacy. Chair.
So they'll roll over every year with the chairman.
We don't even have to make a change on that one.
We don't even have to make a change.
That one will just say B O C Chairman and we won't even have to.
Find me if you wanna leave it. Don't give me one.
It's fine. I know she wanted it pretty bad because after I told her no, she wouldn't ask you, so.
I didn't ask him it was laying there and I made a comment of why it was laying there. I didn't call him and ask him. He should come in.
Pushed it out there so you could see it.
Really, I've.
So you need the motion to.
Yes.
I've come in for something. I can remember where you came in.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Oh, it don't matter. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Doesn't make any difference. It just makes it easier. I'm all about the M E.
Okay.
Okay. Detention transport for January twenty-two.
Just have one signature on that.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
All in favor? Call phone number two?
Thompson, who made that motion?
Martin.
Okay, second that. Okay. Transfer for enhanced nine one one M and O to personal services, twenty thousand dollars for salary.
Do you want to make this effective or do you sign here or do you want Jay to still sign there?
We've already made the motion, so I think.
I just need someone to sign about a quarter of the way down, right about where you're, nope.
Chairman.
Right there.
Right there.
Then you'll still.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need to sign the three spots.
Yes.
There we go. Already did that one. Decoration surplus, District Three, a road crew and a twenty sixteen John Deere sixty-one thirty-five E tractor.
I'm moving.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. South Africa County sent to public auction, April fourth, Sturgis tractor, truck sales in Nino, uh, the road crew and the tractor.
Just my.
Authorically assigned. Just go into public auction.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Waiver form for District Three.
Marvin's signature on that.
This is just for the increase.
It was sent to me. I don't know, have a clue what it is.
That's what it is. They offered them one and you want to know what it is.
I'll make a motion. And the waiver? All in favor?
Aye.
We got two letters for some statements. Partial. For District Three.
Aye.
I mean, are you guys mailing these out? We're just gonna scan them back in the center. If you're gonna mail them out, then you'll sign when you sent them out and then sign if they were sent out by. But I wouldn't sign that until you get ready to send them out. I'll send them back down to her.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any name for same business?
Uh, I've had three calls with some fire piece guys. We need to talk about it. Since the AM deal.
Yeah.
Flared up and we sent two task force two different times down there to help them with other counties too. I think probably better put a burn van on just to.
We need to put it on to next week's agenda or are we gonna?
You gotta do next week's.
Well, we can do that. That's fine.
Well, I mean, don't think we do that.
I think it's a situation where we need to get it done as quick as we can because that occurred after the general was put on.
Well, and then the only other way is emergency meeting.
Really, it is, but.
I'm fine either way.
I could, I consider it to be something we really need to get done, but I guess we can wait until next week. We might get in trouble if we do it, but the justification is what we had just south of this.
Well, and also you got a big chance of raining Thursday.
We do have.
And you got a big chance of raining Monday.
Monday, yeah.
Now, the, I, yes, we do. We're supposed to.
Today's the highest fire danger day, I think, of the week, right?
Uh, today and probably tomorrow. The wind's switching two different days and.
Well, what's, what's, I mean, if you wanna call emergency meeting, just, or whatever we need to do. Do you wanna put it on this week?
I don't know. They were, Mr. Chure wanted on which question we could get it, but maybe we can wait until next week. I don't know.
What do you think, Chair?
How long you got to advertise an emergency meeting?
You know.
Guess we'd have an emergency meeting.
Do you want to have an emergency meeting?
About two minutes?
Well, I gotta go post an agenda. It can't be that fast. You do gotta let everybody know as fast as you can, so.
Tomorrow?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you can have it this afternoon.
CDs.
We can have it this afternoon if you.
Yeah, I mean, you can have it this afternoon.
That's fine. Me too. Gonna do that.
I mean, we let her know and call the paper and we can call. I don't know who we should call. So just let as many people know about it as you can.
Well, then if it does rain Monday and Thursday, we can take it off Monday.
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
So let's put a seven day.
You want seven day one?
Yes.
We can do that.
If we get caught with that, two weeks. We're waiting two weeks.
Yeah, and, and even if we put on more than two weeks, we can cancel it anytime during that course, but.
I mean, seven days.
Seven days.
Monday.
Monday we can extend it.
Then you ain't gotta work, right? Monday will be the deadline.
You wanna have the meeting at one o'clock?
I see one o'clock's in about an hour, ain't it?
Yeah, I, yeah.
Yeah, we can, I mean, we can just call all the papers and have it at eleven o'clock.
Okay, let's do that.
Let's do that.
Eleven.
Add, just add. Add, just add one more one.
Yeah, that's exactly what I did. I figured that one out. Thank you, Marvin. Okay, we have an emergency meeting at eleven o'clock then, and I'll go call the, um...
We're not setting it on, so...
Yeah, I'm not about to change mine from fourteen to seven days and that.
Can we have some T-vote here?
One of you can.
No, Marvin, I brought it up first.
Just go eat now.
So...
Well, I'll move it.
I'll make the motion with Jerry.
I'll second.
All in favor?